I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Welcome our two new board members, Donald White and Ted Rider. So it's good to have you here. We have some crazy things that's in place. And are there any changes that we have to the agenda?
The agenda is good, however, we may have changes after we exit from executive session. So for now, it's good and we can approve it as is.
All right, then we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Carrie. Is that Brad?
That's Brad.
Okay. Motion by Carrie, executive by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion, Carrie. We have a brief executive session, so we need to get a motion to adjourn the executive session for the purpose of personal.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion, Carrie.
Okay, we will adjourn to Director Mueller's office. You thought you were in charge of the other team.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Next to warm and dry in there, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion, Carrie. Next, we have some presentations.
Do we need to amend the agenda first, or can we do it later on? Okay.
That would work. Okay, so we'll need to amend the agenda to add 9G, which is to reclassify positions from deputy superintendent to assistant superintendent and to create positions of Native American Instructional Coach and the Director of Human Resources and Staff. So that would be items 9G and 9H, so we need a motion to amend the agenda to put in those items. Motion number one. Or I'm sorry, add addendum number one.
I need to adjust the motion.
Okay, so we got a motion by Ted, second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion, Carrie. Okay, now we do that.
Great, so we have a guest with us this evening representing the New York State School Boards Association, and this is Christine Stars, who is joining us for a presentation and recognition of a Salamanca community member.
Sorry, I had to get a replacement, and it is a woman right quick there. It is a pleasure indeed to be here tonight. I am on the Board of Directors for the New York State School Board Association as the area's leader. Area three covers Chicago, Cataragus, Allegheny, and Scranton towns. I'm also second vice president of NISBA. And with that, I paid the same amount that you do for a cup of coffee. I'm really happy to be here tonight. I'm happy to see, I'm a member of the James Stone School Board and the Erie Two Voces Board, and I'm happy to see that your executive sessions are as brief as ours. I began to wonder if maybe we were tying for a record between the two of us. The reason I'm here tonight is to give a very special recognition. And when I was asked to do this about two months ago, it was just, will this fit into your schedule? Will we be happy to go? Yes, I will. Little did I know that the events of the last two months were going to make this even more important. This has been a tough time in this country to watch what's going on and the bad things that are happening. And we all fully know that there are good things that need to be recognized and need to be recognized more often than the bad things are making. What happens here is the media focuses in on the bad instead of focusing on the good. And there are many good things. And NISBA several months ago decided that the good things needed to get recognized more often because it takes seven good things in the press to negate one bad thing. Something we should all be thinking. And something we should all be thinking about is what it means to be kind and to care and to make sure that we're caring in our communities for other people and trying not to focus on the bad but focus on the good. And here in Salamanca, that seems to have happened. This is a goodwill recognition program because what we're recognizing is that you folks are a community of caring. And because of that community of caring, you cause things to happen that are good. You make people want to do kind and good things. And you should be extremely proud of that. And you should also be extremely proud of a young lady here named Carrie Wombs. Hi, Carrie. If you would come out. Months ago, I'm sure, because it was during football season, there was a game between the Salamanca Warriors JV squad and the Cleveland Hills Golden Eagles. And during that game, a young man named Doug Wasant, who was from the Cleveland Hills Golden Eagles, was injured quite badly, which resulted in he needed surgery on his ankle. And, you know, it was, it was tough. It was tough for the kid to cause the injury because he hadn't intended to cause it, I'm sure. And it was hard for the parents in that game to watch this happen. However, what happened from this is this mom and the booster's club decided to do something good for the young man who was injured and put together a care package and delivered it to him at school. You know, that's fairly rare. Almost never. It's something that was wonderful, that was thought of here and was done, and your community needs to be very proud of it. So as a result, NISBA just happened to notice what you do. And I'd like to present to the Salamanca City School District this Culture of Caring Award for the empathy and compassion shown by your varsity groups, join the varsity football team and booster club in contacting and sending a care package for an injured opponent. Your contribution to a positive district and community culture is to be commended and celebrated. So I congratulate all of you for being part of this school district and this community, but I particularly appreciate it.
You almost said that. You will be a viral sensation.
There's a box here for that. And guys, I hate to look like I'm running out the door because I am running out the door. I have a James Stone Board meeting tonight, and I told them I tried to make it for their executive session. I mean, it was nice to see all of you, and you should be very proud of this district.
I'll turn it over to Jeff Klutzner and Matt Segura. Bringing out the big guns tonight.
I had one you're on. All right, thanks for having me. Jeff Klutzner, Student Design Architecture of La La Company. Tonight, I'm just going to do a brief update on the design and the progress on the design team side, and I'll turn it over to Matt, who gets it built. Last time we were here in February, so glad to be back. And like I've said in the past, I'll try not to repeat any information, and I don't think I have too much repeated information. I got a lot of new stuff here to present. Primary task that we've been working on, Prospect Elementary. I think people are aware that it was bid and awarded. I think they're getting a little bit of action started over there. Matt will report on that. Our team helped with the bidding, of course, and the contracts, and now we're in construction administration on the design team side. For the high school and the admin addition, documents are complete, excited to say. We just made some edits to the submission because we're going to turn it into SCD as two projects, which captures a little bit of extra funding based on previous projects. So we're actually finishing that up, and it'll be uploaded this week likely. We actually were working with the team on some final items today. Following the successful Phase Four referendum in May, our team resumed progress on the SCMAC design phase, and we're planning to meet with stakeholders this month. We're initially going to meet next Tuesday, but that's getting delayed because we have a moving update for the district that day. So we're going to kind of move our team around, which is not an issue, of course. Additional things we're working on with the district. We're working on some district branding stuff, which is exciting for the interiors of the building and some of other branding items. We did some early childhood planning stuff with the district, and then also we're working on some SED submission stuff related to your property acquisitions. So our team's pretty active right now on the design side for the architects and the engineers. I noticed I spelled "the" wrong in that slide, so hopefully none of the students saw that. Phase 3.3 Proctor, very straightforward area reported on this. These are images you've seen of the addition, which is down at the end. Again, I'm not going to repeat a lot of info. These are the interiors. I will note that we've been meeting with the furniture providers, working on procurement of the furniture, even though we're, you know, more than a year away for construction to be complete. That process is already starting with our design team, with me and Delia and the rest of the group. High school, I got some new stuff. We've been working on some of the renderings. I think the renderings I showed in the past were really not really that developed. But now that we're, you know, fully designed, this gives you a better idea of the admin addition, which is right off the end of the building over here, if you can imagine. So we have that last door, little bit of grass area. In behind there will be tennis courts, which show up in a later image. But we wanted to use a piece of the footprint that really did not impact any of the fields, and this also attaches right to where the administration is right now. The facade itself, I know everybody loves the teal panels, but they'll be gone. All the teal panels get replaced, and we have this red element that gets introduced into the facade. You can see in the distance, there's a new canopy at the high school entrance. New canopy over at the fire entrance there. So we get rid of some of the outdated canopies, replace those, get rid of the teal panels, add a little more current color with the red, which I think will look great. It's not over the top, but it also matches the red on the additions off the back of the building that were done for the STEAM addition. Our interior design team has been pretty involved lately, working on color schemes for the admin addition and for the Native American suite. Some really updated renderings with all the finishes. This is the entrance into the addition. This is the center of the addition. We're, we're trying to create some really open kind of collaboration spaces, a little different than what office design was a few years ago, but really creating a lot of shared spaces, spaces where we can bring staff into the building, parents, students for any type of meeting. Native American Services Suite. Again, with different palette here, a lot of the same stuff, a lot of natural, obviously, looking materials, which is kind of the theme of the whole addition. This is their entrance. Again, they have these collaboration areas, more geared towards students who are in the suite. We don't want to make it just about coming in for maybe tutoring or for assistance, but really making it somewhere where the students want to be. This is that space here, and then all the way down, you see tables where students can come in, meet in groups, meet with a tutor or a teacher. Gives you a little better feel for it here. This is all where the admins suite used to be. So this is all, we take that whole area of the building and dedicate that to the Native American Services. Some more images, not as exciting bathrooms and offices. Space for high school athletics. This was what was presented to the voters in the referendum in May. This image is right from that, all that information that went out to the voters. Next week, we'll start regrouping on this and dialing in some of the details on, you know, different materials that are used, you know, how it gets implemented, where everything gets placed. This is pretty accurate, based on meetings that we had with the district up for the referendum. But now we start to fine tune the design for SCMAC design, design development CDs. Lots of little notes on the bottom, kind of indicate all the different pieces of the project. Something we're excited about, we're going to take the old maintenance-built garage and then use the structure of that and the foundations to create a new concession restroom, public kind of building as you walk in onto the site. This was what we kind of used in the referendum, and again, our design team's kind of refining this, looking at this. But it's interesting that we're able to use that old structure and kind of bring it back to life with new cladding and kind of remaking the roof, if you will. So out at the street side, it might look like this, where you kind of approach in and go to the track from the street side at that entrance, and visiting athletes will, it'll be really in their face where they've arrived to in Salamanca for the Warriors. And, oh. So that's it. Can you take any questions if there are? We'll turn it over to Matt.
Well, good evening, guys. Quite some time since I've stood in front of you and given you nothing. You used to see Julian. He's on eternity leave. Daddy doing so, adjusting to be a new man. Tonight, brief update on Prospect, the high school, middle school, kind of where we are with what we've done so far. It's pretty light, because as you heard Jeff say, the project was bid. It's been awarded, the notice to proceed's been sent out, the contracts are executed. Temporary power was over there, may fifth. Got that on this. Same laydown area we had before, which is off the back of Prospect. So all the contractors will have their staging area there, the materials there. We're really gearing up for end of the school year. This is a project where when we start this addition, there's currently occupied space in the school. So once school year ends, we'll get after this piece and start demo. So some upcoming milestones. We're looking to break ground on June 27th. It'll be starting the demo. The interesting part about this work is the slab of that facility stays, and we build over the top of it and out further. So there are some unique things to consider. We'll work with Rich and protect the basement from water, and he's got some stuff in there to clean out. Time to purge, maybe, put some stuff up for auction, clean out the basement because it's going to be, needed to be moved. We'll get into roof replacement about that same time. There is a lot of work over at Prospect from a rich standpoint. We're looking to complete the foundations beginning of August, which will get us into a point where we can get this facility, the new addition, closed before winter and then build out the inside throughout the course of the year. Substantial completion dates, a couple of them. We're looking at things a little differently. The roof is different from the addition, is different from the actual project. So the roof, we're looking to get wrapped up at the end of August. The addition is July, in the July, so that you can have time to move in. That's 23, by the way, let me clarify, it's July 23. July of '22. And then the entire project wraps up the end of August in '23. So 3.4, you heard Jeff talk about this again. Where we are there, a little bit deeper calendar run. SED review is June to August. We booked a bid in the periods of September to October, depending, it's all when we get the approval from SED and when we can go out on the street. But benchmarks and milestones, groundbreaking is November of '22, fall. Native American Suite renovation starts June 23. Substantial completion for both pieces is 12/31/23, which would mean then the district would move in January 24. Jeff again went over this, so it's kind of the same information from a slide period and what we're looking to do. Jeff talked about the design. This is the construction sequence for Phase Four. Design period, May of '22 to May of '23. SED review, hopefully back in September of '23. The bid period would then, that fall, which is for them the next, next season, construction season. But we get going right away with moving some things, demo and site prep. But we'd work with the school to organize that plan so that it works with sports and your facilities and Rich and what he's got to move out, and that'll all be coordinated with the bid documents. Simple and straightforward for tonight.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just to clarify, Levi, can you go back to the, I'm sorry, the high school athletic complex field, particularly the one between the track and softball field? So one, just. There we go. One of the things that, to the far side, where the shot and discus fields are, we're currently still having conversation about the orientation of the practice grass field. So just, that has not yet been decided. Part of that is going to be determined on what happens with the existing tennis courts and some of the ancillary stone bus parking that's kind of more because we have outgrown transportation. So that's still on the docket, and that's really, I just wanted to, I didn't get that down on the record.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, thanks.
Our next speaker is going to say in the opening.
Thank you. Good evening. We're kind of COVID. The county is currently at a moderate level for transmission, and we've been a decline for the past four weeks. We have seen that downward trend in our schools as well. We currently have two staff members on quarantine and four students. This is one of the lowest points we've been in the past four months. We also have a surplus of COVID tests and encourage anyone who is feeling ill, which includes allergy-like symptoms, to get a test and rule out COVID. One of the things that we have seen consistently is that individuals who have referred to as allergy-like symptoms, end up getting tested and they have been coming back positive. So as we've seen over the past two years, this virus has a tendency to take on different symptoms at different points in time throughout the years. So if you're feeling ill, we have more tests than we know what to do with. So please pick one up from any of the building offices or let me know if you need one, and we'll get one for you. Over the past month, there has been a significant focus on school and community safety. Last week, our district hosted a community forum on safety, and I wish to extend my gratitude to those who participated and to our community partners who are on site. That includes the Seneca Nation of Indians Marshals, the Salamanca City Police Department, the Cataragus County Sheriff's Department, the Cataragus Probation Department, the City of Salamanca, including our mayor and older persons, our Director of School Safety and Security, and other Salamanca school personnel. I really wanted to make a point of indicating all those who were here and contribute to our community because we truly have a culture of caring. If anyone has questions regarding our school's safety or security, please do not hesitate to contact your school principal or your supervisor or myself. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick safety update, based on some of the earlier conversations that manifested today. When we had our safety forum, two weeks or so ago, we talked about our need for continued community involvement engagement. And there was some information that I became aware of today that happened very late last week, and I want to make some commendations and some recommendations, and also to, you know, kind of clarify some things. We had a report last week that a student had brought in a weapon to school. This occurred immediately after school, late last week, and the report came to one of our mental health staff members in a different building who immediately contacted the school resource officer in their assigned building who contacted the school resource officer in, on the main campus. They did some home visits, they followed up, they did some checking. I can confirm, based on our late conversations today, that the student did not have a weapon, but had a portion or part of a disassembled paintball apparatus. The parents and the students were contacted. We felt as though that everyone was safe. However, as with social media, things kind of mushroomed. So I wanted to recognize our staff members who, after school hours, made sure the students, if I should, were safe, ensured the families were safe, made sure our campuses were safe. Inventedly, this was out in the community on some social media platforms that we didn't see. So we need to do a better job of being vigilant with those social media platforms or conversations happening in the community. But I think the takeaway is really important. If any member felt safe to call a staff member that wasn't in the same building but was connected with us, and our team deployed and mobilized. In our spirit of openness and communication, when we get it well, Levi is going to sing it loudly and proudly on social media. And when we don't get it as well as we planned or would like, that responsibility falls on me to make sure we, A, acknowledge it, B, get better, and close that, we already said this before, close that communication loop so that everyone knows we are safe and we will take every threat, every accusation, every inquiry with extreme seriousness. And if someone does do something that makes us unsafe, we will pursue that to all legal ends necessary. And I also want to acknowledge some of our board members who were in this loop before I was, that pass that on to me. So I truly appreciate the team effort because there's a lot that's happening. And as we said last week, everyone's responsibility is safe. So that's why I say.
We'll land the communication. So do we have anybody here or Title VI?
Just on Title VI, I'm on Title VI. We are having a meeting tomorrow night, and we are finally finalizing nominations for Indigenous Parent Committee. We have three seats open, and I think right now we have three nominations already. But we're looking at getting three more appointed to our IPC. And I think our election happens on the 17th. So just keeping you on the loop, Title VI is still there and we're still meeting, and we're still talking.
We'll move on to Central Office message. Carrie, I do not believe this.
Just a quick note of more appreciation for everything that our staff has done up to this point this year and is doing moving forward. Most folks in education, especially those who've been in for a while, will tell you that this has been one of the most challenging years academically and socially for our staff as well as for our students. And it's taken an awful lot of give and take on both sides of the desk, and I just wanted to express that, you know, I understand that. We need to be sure that we are understanding each other and just ask for continued vigilance as we progress toward the rest of the academic year, and I wish everyone the best.
All right, we'll move on to our board message. Dale, might as well start with you.
Sure, why not? First, like the, well, congratulations and welcome to, or flip in as the board. Welcome to the board. I'd also like to echo what Mark said. Saying, the staff from superintendent down for all the work this year, for challenges. I'm saying, you know, staff from two to ten thousand down for for all the work this year, for challenging year. Um I know I'm looking for. But, you know, both of us in in the twelve-month division, there's really no end. To the school year, it's just a transition into summer school into the the next next school year, but I I just want to say thanks for your work.
Thanks, Dale. Brad?
Uh Terry's John, but I just want to say congrats to the chair, I'm seeing him here, Ward. Obviously, those are stories that certainly make you feel proud to be part of this district. Just want to welcome the board members.
Now I just wanted to thank everybody um for coming out to vote. Yeah, always good to see a lot of community action uh. Everything that we do around here, it's always great. I'm just happy that uh. I got to meet a bunch of people, the introductions have been numerous, the curve is great and. I'm just currently kind of enjoying absorbing the process. Honestly, here I am and it's helping so.
Actually, I just wanted to talk quite a bit closer. I'm originally from the other reserve of Cataragus. A nonprofit. But I'll tell you straight up that East City of Salamanca has so many people that basically people threw out their back. And you see all of these different organizations within the city collaborating and doing everything they can to give assistance to help. Taking a care package to another school. Really real special. About that. But Ted said it's. Is uh it's doomed. There's a lot, lots of work. I'll give it my best shot.
Congratulations to you two. Congratulations. You're in for an exciting ride. We really are. There's a lot going on here. No better time to be part of the district too. A lot of good things to them. Thank you to everybody. I think Mark, Mark was right. It's been a tough year. I hear it all the time. I hear how tough it's been. I hear the struggles and the trials, tribulations, everything, but thank you all. Hey, we're in the home stretch. Two more weeks? Yeah.
One more board meeting.
One more board meeting.
And everyone can breathe again.
No, just keep up the great work, you know. You know, we appreciate everything that you guys do. We always have, we always will. And thank you. Um. Another note, everybody, if you haven't signed up for the Sidney Moore five K, it's this Sunday. Make sure you all get there and sign up. We'll be doing registrations in the morning. Um. My lovely wife up there, Mindy John, has been doing a heck of a job organizing and getting it ready. And uh I'm kind of the unofficial helper, emcee, assistant, whatever, whatever's needed. So over there Sunday morning looking for anyone to sign up and join us in the five K honor agreement. Maybe, yeah, thanks.
Sure. And you think you got the Gopher title? Go for this and go for that.
Oh, yeah. I always start Friday.
Uh I also wanted to welcome Flip and Ted. I mean, this is my new best friend right here because we talk about everything. So it's it's great. We have a great working relationship with the board and we're excited that you're both on the board. And I hope that you uh find it as um inspiring as I do still to try to help and. Do something better toward the community and uh not just the community, but the students and the staff. You know, everybody that encompasses our school district. You know, Terry Rumson was just an example of, just like you said, uh we'll get the shirt off our back. Almost everybody in the community, you go up and tell them you need something, they're there. There's always a parent that's willing to step up and help another kid. That kid in trouble or, um no, you don't do that. Keep in mind, you're not your kid because you care about the kids in the community. And it has been a tough year with the with the pandemic and it's still going on and um. I know I've talked to a couple of parents that. A parent that has a child outside of our district that wants to bring them into our district because of, you know, how we do things and. And that's good to hear. Instead of having parents want to pull their kids and send them somewhere else that want to come to our district. That's what we do and how we say it and how we support people. And uh, you know, it starts with the staff, the kids, the staff, the administration, and also everybody. And uh it's never said enough. Uh again, you know, just like uh communicating issues that are very sensitive and in the news lately. You know, all those other schools, mass shootings just everywhere. You know, just trying to let people know that if you see something and it's too long, don't be afraid to say something. Because you may just save a life or lives, because you just don't know. And we have a lot of support staff that can help and can make sure that somebody is not a threat to our district. That we love in our district. So, you know, if uh pass that message on to your friends, your kids, you, whoever. And if you see it, you say something. There's seven of us, there's all the administrators, principals, you know, everybody. You know, we can make sure that we try to keep our kids, our staff, and that community safe as possible. That's what I thought. And I'll turn it over to our.
Okay, uh couple of items. So first, thank you to our. Audience members for being here. I know there are a few appointments on the agenda tonight, so we're delighted to have you join our Warrior family. And when we get to that point, for those who are joining us for the first time or those who are sitting in the role, we'll take some time and make sure our uh introductions are proper to introduce your community. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ryder, Mr. White, Flip and Ted uh for being here as our board members and thank you for serving uh our community for. For hopefully the next several years. Uh we appreciate your volunteerism and as always, uh if you have a question or need information. Or a text away or a phone call away and we appreciate all that our volunteer board members do. I I also want to recognize and let the board know that on June twenty-first, our um. Award-winning state champion, Renata Fusco-winning artist of my team will be here. We'll recognize uh the students from Seneca Intermediate and Salamaca High School. Officially under the umbrella of Seneca Intermediate because that's where the majority of the students will come. Um and just, you know, in for those who are not aware of OM, I I think most people know I'm a pretty big OM booster from. Salamanca days and uh my son's days um back, you know, back in the day. One thing that I will tell you about our Seneca Intermediate group that performed and the high school kids that performed on the team. When they were doing their dress rehearsal and I'll probably get a little more, you know, emotional when they're here in about uh two weeks, but. I don't think there was adult in an adult in the room that saw the student practicing that we were not ready to just pack up and go home. A long trip to Iowa, you can't really get to Iowa quickly. After spending sixteen and a half hour driving props across the country, I can attest, you cannot get there quickly. Um I want to thank Levi and Brenda Windows and Janet McClure and a few of our other parents and chaperones that went with us, but. When they announced their names, and for those who don't know Odyssey of the Mind, you can become a world champion in the division. You can take second and get to run down there on stage. You can take third and get to run down there on stage. And there were several hundred teams competing, but they only give out five creativity awards. This is a legit competitive thing. To get this award is the equivalent of an Olympic gold medal in creativity. And what we did not know was the adults, the day before, we were ready to just pack up and leave. We were like, this is not working. The kids redid everything from Thursday, Wednesday night to Thursday morning. Unbeknownst to the coaches, and they changed everything. They started doing riffs of Queen and Journey and Hario Speedwagon. They were nowhere in the script and they killed it. Like literally, they beat every team in style and performance. That is seriously as a result of their creativity, all of the teachers' instruction, the coaching. For this part, we have those kids. So when we have them next uh next board meeting, it's a big deal. So I get really excited with the OM kids and um you will see the level of excitement for them as well. So we're honored uh to do that. In terms of cooperation and caring, and I appreciate New York State School Boards coming in to recognize really the essence of what Warriors do. We're kind and we're benevolent and we're caring and we're part of a big collective family. But if you mess with us, we're going to come at you. And we are competitive and we are fierce, but we are kind and we are compassionate. When we see someone in need, we we take that step. And I'm truly honored when school boards called us, um you know, a couple of months ago to say, we really don't, it's been a while, but we don't want to let this rest. And uh we're delighted to have community members that do that. And so in that vein, um we have an event coming up on June twentieth and we kind of admittedly kicked the can down the road. Um not because we wanted to, but just because we've been dealing with kids and performances and programs and mental health and physical health. So um our teachers and our staff are off on June twentieth for Juneteenth Day. Uh a new uh state and federal holiday that is kind of evolving. And um our teachers and our students are off. We calculate that into the contract and really. We're wrestling with how do we deal with the other units and we've kind of said, well, we'll get to it in negotiations. Well, it's in two weeks. So um I spoke with the Board of Ed and they have given the authorization. So as of today, June ninth, June nineteenth, Juneteenth Day, which happens to be on June twentieth. Will be an excused holiday for all employees, with the exception of our few buildings and ground staff. We have to do building checks so the buildings are safe. We'll float them on holiday. We'll follow our normal process. But Juneteenth and June twentieth will be an excused day for all faculty and all staff. And I say that because when we recognize that we need to do something, this board not only demands it, they expect it. And we're happy to comply. And that same token, we've had a couple of um collective bargaining labor management conversations for the board's benefit. Um we're nearing conclusion on a contract extension with the Consolidated Service Unit. Secretaries, some paraprofessional staff members, nurses and such. So um I'm not sure that that will be done by June twenty-first, probably not. But shortly thereafter, we've got what I think will be our last negotiation, bumping things up on Thursday this week. A very productive conversation with the Teachers Association today. And based on that conversation, we are going to be implementing some changes to some of our summer professional development. So we'll get that out to staff. And I want to thank all of the associations, in particular Mrs. Wuchersky and Mrs. Tiltlet, today. For their guidance and their suggestions on how we can improve summer professional development. Um to meet everyone's needs and to be consistent and fair with everybody. And of course, our administrators for all of your hard work and our other units for making sure that the trains run as close to on time as we can. As we hit the home stretch for June. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mrs. Wright.
We're going to move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Brad, second by Karen. Are there any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda? All right, the motion by Brad, second by Karen. All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. We have no old business. We have our new business. We have the dedication on Prospect, element to the. So we need a motion, a motion by Karen John. I need a second.
I need to keep hold on that for a second.
Second by Ted. Do we have any questions?
I do not. Um I did contact the family and we've got dates. Um we don't have exactly to your point, but it'll be the week of June thirteenth. For a dedication at Prospect Onsite. Uh we do have a mock-up. I've shared that with the board, but in reflection. Um in a way, uh with the board's permission and share that with the committee. At the dedication, I believe the plan is to do some recognition at the Walk. I haven't officially confirmed. I should be talking to Mindy. And the only other addition is there were some conversations from that uh came uh to my attention today. About other staff members uh and we have a policy that's articulated about memorial dedications. Um there have been some overtures from family members of uh individuals who had passed away recently and not so recently. Um and there was been some expression of posting and putting benches and at Betts Park for some um alumni that have. Recently or sort of been uh passed away and some benches, particularly at Prospect. So we're open to suggestions and recommendations. We do have an articulated process, follow that process. And we have um, you know, great enthusiasm for recognizing longstanding warriors and community members who've contributed to our district over the decades.
And also just want to recognize, you do have a class office because you all put the letter together and the class advisor is here.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kate Wong, the vice president. I'm Cindy John, the president of the.
Any advisor?
We already even heard all the credit.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion by Karen, second by Ted. All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. Item B is our Turner Construction Company Phase Four Letter of Intent. So we need a motion to approve that. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. Next, the agreement with our whole development company. So we need a motion to approve the agreement from. That. Twenty twenty-one through July thirty-first to twenty twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve that. Motion by Dale. Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. And B is a budget transfer. We need a motion to approve the budget transfer. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. Item B is to abolish and create positions. That's our list of the agenda. So we need a motion to create and abolish those positions. Motion. Motion by Karen, the second by Ted. Are there any questions?
Just for the board and the community to note that all of these or any of these abolishments do not impact staff members. These are vacant or previously created positions that are not filled. Um so there are no reductions of bodies. Uh these are just changes in classification and based on.
So we got a motion by Karen, second by Ted. All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. Item F is uh the creation of a student club. So we need a motion to approve um formation of a varsity club. Student and the advisory community club. Motion by Flip, second by Karen. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstaining motion here. Nine G is um request of the superintendent position to assistant superintendent. We need a motion to approve that. We need a motion to approve that.
No question, question.
Just, just the deputy superintendent. Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion here. Item H is the creation of positions affected July 11th. One full-time Native American instructor post and one full-time director of human resources and staff above. Motion to approve those two new positions. Motion by Brad. Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion here. We have our personal consent agenda. Personal consent agenda. A1. There's a lot, there's a lot. And then we have our personal action number two. And of course, we have personal action number three. So. Need a motion to approve all A, B, and C personal consent. Motion. Motion by Carrie. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion here.
We have several individuals here and I'm going to ask for the principals and the administrators to provide some assistance. And we'll let Patty start.
Thank you. I am excited to introduce Carrie Peter. She's going to be our instructional math coach at the high school. She's coming to us from Ole Miss. She's taught there for sixteen and a half years. I actually met her several years ago at a math conference and she was a participant and I was. And just listening to her talk during the meeting, for the training, and then we went to breakout groups and I was so impressed with her. I just always thought, oh my gosh, I would love to have her teach in our district. It would be so exciting. So fast forward, she's got experience with algebra one, advanced geometry, geometry, calculus, pre-calculus. She's an adjunct professor, first aid volunteer. She teaches math, math, methods, methods. She's been very involved at the school. She's chair of our local finals, opening day. Member of the attendance in open house committees, kind of co-adviser for student council. And she's also been part of the Ole Miss volleyball program. She also came back after a matter of. The conference and she did some PD for our math department and they really impressed her. So excited to be here again.
I'm excited to be here too. So you guys did such a great job with like positivity and I was like, wow, I'm like super proud to be here tonight. I'm excited.
Glad to have you. Yes. I know Ms. Pavone is here. There are a few individuals joining the Prospect staff. So y'all, take it away.
Yes, I have a few that are changing roles. I have Kristen Camarano, who's currently a kindergarten teacher, who's going to transition to a math interventionist. So very excited for that transition. Alicia Long is moving from the classroom into one of our reading specialist positions. So. We're excited to have her come on board with that role. And Brittany Jimmerson, who is currently a family liaison, is going to become our librarian. And use her expertise in that area to support our youngest readers. The. Chris and Alicia didn't have to go through the rigorous interview process because they've done that prior with us. But Brittany did go through the panel and did a, an MO lesson with our students and. Is just excited to be able to change the role within the district and still impact our learners here in such a positive way. Yeah, I don't.
Mr. Seaver, certainly. We actually have three new staff members who are being appointed tonight to the high school family. I believe the only one here is Tim Schoffler. And Tim is a member of our community. Who has a vast experience in science, technology, and math. He impressed the committee and myself with his classroom management, engagement, communication skills. His flexibility and ability to change gears on the fly. He is joining the high school faculty as a teacher assistant in our new intervention room. Which again is meant to help close the pandemic gap and proactively provide support. On a short-term basis to students who are in need. He'll be working with individuals or small groups throughout the day. And we look forward to tapping into his energy, creativity, positivity, and hopefully have him help us out a little bit as soon as possible.
She's a member of the community. I believe you did your student teaching over at Prospect in kindergarten, so that's excellent. She worked with all schools in special education. She has a lot of experience and all of her skills and her relationships that she has in the community will make her a great fit at. Nothing, I think I have funding for online, she's been recommended for tenure as a teaching assistant. She's super dedicated to the academic achievement as well as the social emotional learning of our children. And she always takes initiative to collaborate with her colleagues and she shows enthusiasm for learning and is committed to the success of her students. She always goes above and beyond and is always willing to lend a hand in any situation. She's super kind and friendly, always very organized and compassionate. She approaches situations with understanding and we are super happy to have her a part of the Connecticut intermediate school.
Yeah, curriculum, extracurricular. Mrs. John, thank you for stepping up to be our department chair for reading. Levi, thank you for doing pretty much everything except driving a bus. We appreciate that. And I. That's everyone that's either online or in the audience. Did we miss anybody?
We missed their speeches.
Okay, congratulations. Welcome aboard and you are now officially Warriors.
Item 11 is just our board information and reports. Our next continuous education committee. Beginning is.
We're on our schedule. I, there's a conflict with kindergarten and math graduation or kindergarten celebration. So we're working to try to get a date and I don't have a date from.
Okay. Let's see, the 29th is going to be the senior walk. So little kids, wonderful seniors go through the halls and I. It's always a great, great time. So if you can watch that, I think you'll probably be streaming on Facebook one minute. 14th is moving up day. Also on the 14th is the UK celebration. Again, six twenty, no school. And our next tour of education moving will be the 21st. So I'm sure everybody's very excited about that too. And with that.
Did you want to discuss the rework?
I thought we needed to rework.
So.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I think that's great.
By requirement, if you don't have it the first Tuesday, you can have it the second. Tuesday or second week, but you have to take action. So either tonight or next week. For next board meeting, you just have to declare what the actual date is with the holiday, the graduation, that might be tight.
And then we just wanted to confirm, are we going to stick with first?
I think so. Does that work out for everyone? I know we have to do every week, every Tuesday. I already know what.
The Tuesdays and M and Y?
Yeah. So we approve it. Yes, for sure. Is everyone okay with doing the second June 11th, that's the rework meeting and stuff? Come on. I was telling you, so I think July, we just have a different.
We'll stay with the first and the second here or?
Yeah, the first and third normally do the rest of the calendar year except for July. The second.
We'll, we'll get a calendar for the entire year because there's some fun holidays in there that throws up schedule. Does that work?
I want to make sure.
In kindergarten celebration, I may have not been clear. Kindergarten celebration is tomorrow at 6:00 PM at.
Then we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Dale. Second, second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion here.
For our new staff that's here, see Levi, he's going to want to get a lunch shot.